Hey guys, I'm trying to get everybody rearranged here so I have the council members in full view. One, two, three, four. Where did Hugh go? Hmm, not there. There's Hugh.
Hey guys, just getting set up. I'll be on the video in just a sec.
Yeah, we can hear you. I think we're just waiting on Dan at this point. I understand Oden may not be here tonight.
Yeah, he won't.
Was that confirmed, Mike?
Yeah, I talked to him.
Is he doing okay?
He won't be here tonight.
Okay.
Okay. Was there a reason, Mike?
Yeah, family, yes. I was going to announce it at seven o'clock, but yeah, he has a family issue going on right now.
Gotcha. Thanks, man. Hope you're doing okay.
Yeah, he reported things are looking really, really good, so that's encouraging. I'm sure he'll be in touch with everybody, so.
So.
All right.
Never mind.
Okay, Hugh, I'm trying to see if I got your picture up here yet. See if you're at the bottom. Nope.
So, Mary.
All right, not yet. One sec.
That's okay. So, it's six o'clock. Tonight's our workshop on workshops. So, it's like we have one, two, three, four, five members. Like I said, Councilmember Langford will not be joining us, so when Councilmember Dunn joins us, we'll just make notes of that. So, since we don't really take role for this meeting. So, Katie.
Thank you, Mayor. Ann and I have been working together to try to create a format that everyone can follow, is this path forward on workshops. So, I apologize that we're calling it workshop on workshops, but I think it's important that we all get on the same page. And so, I was going to walk you through this, and seriously, when I went over this with Mike Kennedy, Mayor Protem, we really wanted the feedback from the council. Are these the right dates? Are these the right subjects? Is this the right format? So, then I'm going to just walk you through these nine items and go from there. The first ones are really easy because they're done. So, I'm going to just pick up on line number three. This is a special, excuse me, I'm going to go back to line number one. March 4th MRSC webinar on role clarity. If you're interested in attending, could you please let Ann know? This is Thursday, and she could get you registered if you're interested. This is a MRSC webinar. I'm going to go down to March 16th, which is next, a week from tonight, term limits discussion. This is something we've brought before, and one of the things that was pointed out to me with the number of items that we have on the ballot in November, it would be very, very affordable to add a term limit question to the ballot if the council so desires. And I think we have until July or August to get the language all squared away. I'm going to go down to line number three now. After hearing back from all the council members, March 30th from 6:00 to 10:00 was the retreat on capital facilities. And so, this is something that we were looking for council to confirm that date and that time. On line number five, this would be a follow-up to the Robert's Rules of Order. It would just be a, excuse me, Mike, this one's the facilitator, I believe. We were going to go back to something that you had attended and look for a facilitator.
Right, yeah. What I've done is that I went ahead and contacted AWC and asked them over the last several years who they've had to role clarity responsibilities of council and then also on mayors. In the past, they've done a lot on mayors, but not too much on the council aspect of it. One individual, Tom Brubaker, has done this seminar twice now at the mayor's retreat we've had the last two years, and he touches heavily on the responsibility of council and then also how that ties in with the mayor administration back and forth. Extremely effective. I know this last September when Shane and I were involved in it, both of us after said it was very impressive what he was able to do. I have contacted and had a conversation with him. He gave me some dates that he would be available. His fees run about $350 an hour, and most of his stuff can be done an hour, hour and a half, two hours if we want to get to that point. So, I feel it's extremely affordable, and personally, I highly recommend him. Another individual was Jim Dougherty, who's done some of these. Not been able to talk to Jim. He's since retired on it, but I believe our mayor, Chris, you'll probably remember Tom Brubaker. Do you recall him at all? Yeah?
Yeah, I do. Yeah. He did some of the elected officials training, too, I believe, at one point.
Right. So, if we wanted to get into... So, if the council wants to go move ahead with somebody like him or something or other, I could certainly give some dates that he said that he might be, he would be available.
So, I'm going to go ahead and walk through the rest of the agenda, and then really what we're looking for you, from all of you tonight, is are these timeframes okay? And also, let me know for far left, if it's red, that means it's a special meeting. If it's in black, then it's a regular, you know, council meeting workshop. And then we have the rules of procedure made for. So, perhaps we'd want to do the same facilitator for Robert's Rules and Rules of Procedure. It's totally up to you. And then the financial workshop, we pushed that out to July because that then would give us plenty of time to discuss those policies before the budget comes out. However it keeps wanting more time, we can move that back to June. It's totally up to you guys. But this is a huge commitment when I look at the meeting schedule, and I just want to make sure that we're tracking on the same page with the council. So, that's kind of the introduction. Mayor, I didn't know if we wanted to go around and listen to every council person's comments, or if we wanted to go line by line. It'll be up to you guys.
I think it's probably more efficient to go by line by line. So, if we can start with the, well, the MRSC webinar, so just getting touch with the band. It's this Thursday. I think it's 11:00 to 12:00, or 12:00 to 1:00. I've got it scheduled. It's on my calendar in front of me. So, item two then, March 16th, the term with discussion. So, Councilmember Curts, I don't know if you want to talk to that for a minute?
Well, I'm excited that we're getting it on the calendars soon, next time we meet, actually. As far as putting it on the ballot, I'd like to hear what other people, what other people think, but I felt like we were a little bit further along, and we were ready to have some sort of proposal on it, on term limits for us to vote on. So, I'd like to hear from everybody else if we still need to discuss it, what your thoughts are about putting on the ballot. What I recall and what stuck out to me is that we can put it on the ballot, but we can't make this decision without putting it on the ballot.
Well, and Councilmember Curts, obviously, it sounds like, you know, we still need some more discussion on it, and that's what the next meeting is for, to gather that feedback. And Katie, I know you and I talked a little bit, you know, if it doesn't go on the ballot, we can have Sean put together, you know, how it would read fairly quickly. So, it sounds like you're probably in agreement, Councilmember Curts, that the 16th is a good date for that, and we can talk about the options at that point.
Yeah, I think having it on the workshop agenda, but then also on the regular meeting agenda, so if there's any action we want to take, we're able to do that.
Councilmember Curts, do you prefer the 6:00 or the 7:00 p.m. hour?
Either. Oh, I didn't hear the answer.
Either.
That doesn't matter. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Well, I do suspect that, I mean, it could be a five-minute discussion. It could be the whole hour. So, we're probably better off if we don't have anything else for that 6:00 p.m., unless there's any objection. I think we should probably put it at 6:00. Does everybody, any objection to that? Okay, looks like we're good for 6:00. Okay? All right.
Question.
On the third one, go ahead, Councilmember Receivers.
Only because we skipped role clarity. I had a quick question on the MRSC webinar. Question came to me earlier today. Is that MRSC webinar, is that available to the public if they wanted to hop on their offload? Is that only for electeds?
You know what? I don't know.
I don't know. I'm wondering, Ann, do you know the answer to that?
I don't know the answer to that. I can check.
A part of it says it's not Hugh. Well, we can check, but I think you have to be a member of MRSC to access the training. But we will, why don't we let us Google it and we'll get back to you.
Because some of the organizations have a member price, and others have a non-member price, so we can check that out. Thanks, Ann.
The question came actually from a, I won't say who, but a member of one of our commissions, and it prompted me to think, well, I understand the intent is partially for us to get some role clarity for sake of our team environment, but I got to thinking that, gosh, if I'm thinking about running for council, and we've got with, I'll say, 15 actual applicants, I can only imagine that some of them who might be thinking about running might like to join that also. You know, if I was thinking about running for council and wanted a little bit more clarity around what the role is, I wonder if there's a way of us helping facilitate that, or if we could consider them members or somehow. Just throwing it out there, if you don't mind, maybe zap or an email back to the council so we could relay that to other folks. If it is something they could consider, that'd be great.
Yeah, and Councilmember Receivers, if they're on one of the commissions, obviously, that's part of the city, so that would be something we would do. Mayor Protem?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Receivers, good idea there for the public, anybody who's interested in running. The one, if we do decide to use like Tom Brubaker on something like that, would be an absolute perfect one for them to be involved with. That would be open to the public because it goes into great detail, responsibility of the legislative side of the House, administrative side of the House, responsibility of council, responsibility of mayor. That'd be an excellent one for them to be involved with.
Great idea. Thanks. Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, you bet.
Okay, so if there's no other comments on that, we will move to special meeting, March 30th on capital facilities. So, this is the one the Doodle Poll went out about, and so we came up with March 30th being the best date for everybody. Ironically, it came out to be a Tuesday. I know we went into this thinking maybe another day of the week might work, but, you know, it is what it is. So, I think, you know, we wanted to get this on sooner than later, so unless anybody has any other comments about the date and time, my vision of the meeting, and just to me, a starting point, you know, I kind of foresee us looking through, you know, our priorities, the dollar amount and the funding source to start, and then we can start maybe rearranging the blocks, if you will, as to, you know, what we might want to consider funding first, things that might have to go together. I don't see us getting down the entire list. We may end up taking the top four, five, whatever we have time for, but you've got a four-hour block of time there. So, any other thoughts on the content of that meeting before we go to the next one? Councilmember Kennedy, or Mayor Protem, sorry.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it. My assumption is we would start that at 6:00, 6:00 p.m., just carry through.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, makes sense. Thank you.
Councilmember Foyer.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I guess my expectation from that meeting was some strategic discussion around our capital facilities such as police department, library, trailhead, so on and so on. Is that part of the equation for that evening?
Yes, that will, in my mind, those were the top things that I figured we would be discussing. If anybody has any other thoughts, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay, hearing nobody else on the 30th. So, then the next one would be if another special meeting on either April 13th or April 27th. This is one where we had talked about a possible joint workshop with the Valley, not on policy, not on, it's more of a, they are interested in just getting us up to date on their projects, where they stand. I think it's a really great time for us to do the same. So, you know, we kind of pushed that off last time. We, you know, I think the Valley was looking to have it sometime in February or March. Obviously, that's not working for us. We have other higher priority things to talk about. But I'd like to hear some thoughts on that, hopefully not too lengthy meeting with the Valley, and we have to figure out the logistics of it and who's running it and whatnot. But I'm open to hear some thoughts on that meeting. Go ahead, Councilmember Receivers.
I guess only just hearing you talk right now, do we have specific projects that we're open to collaborate on with them, or are we just going to listen to a download?
Well, both ways, but yeah, they do have some things that they want to talk to us about collaborating on.
Could we get a list of those? I just want to be a little bit more targeted with our meeting, I guess would be my hope, say what specific projects relate to the city of Livery Lake. And I honestly would love to use some of that time to collaborate with them and hope to build a little bit rapport with each, a rapport with each other. There's been a number of, I'm going to call them, number of rubs between our cities over the last year or so. I'm trying to use my words very carefully right now, but I would like to use the time to hopefully build some rapport with each other and maybe talk about specific meetings or specific projects that we should collaborate on. And I, you know, I don't necessarily care about all of their projects. I care about maybe a few. If we can get a list as soon as possible so we can start, you know, thinking about that and using that time a little more effectively with each other.
Yeah, agreed. And the intent was for, once we, you know, decide on which date, that we'll work collaboratively between the staff, on the agenda, the projects that, you know, are, could potentially affect each other's jurisdiction, anything we might want to collaborate on one way, you know, either them with us or us with them. So, we would definitely have that in advance to review and discuss.
Thank you.
Okay. I think I have Councilmember Foyer, and then we have Councilmember Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor. I could look it up on the computer, but does anybody know off the top of their head when their normally scheduled meetings are?
Every Tuesday.
Yeah, they meet every Tuesday, but every other Tuesday is just workshop.
Every other Tuesday is just a workshop. Okay, so I'm not super excited about having, carving out a special day for a workshop with their council. I'd be more in favor of working it into one of our regularly scheduled workshop meeting times, because I can't imagine it's going to be a lengthy discussion, especially if like Hugh suggested we get their list of what they want to talk about. We give them ours and make it a bit of a more meaningful, to the point, you know, how I like to the point discussions. So, that's my two cents worth. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunn.
You know, in the word of projects, I also like to bring forward that the problems of that city are potentially the problems of our city, and also the opportunities that are in that city right now are potentially our opportunities. And to say that in referring to an agenda, I would, I'd want to say beyond the scope of specific action, have observations from, I'd say, their council and/or mayor about what they believe are the challenges and the opportunities that they face. I think therein may create the opportunity for us to work together. So, thanks.
Thank you. Back to Councilmember, well, hold on, Councilmember Receivers. Councilmember Woodrow.
I got myself unmuted. Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd be interested in this because we share a border with Spokane Valley, and as Councilmember Dunn just mentioned, some of their problems are going to be our problems, some of our problems, you know, the good things might be some of our good things. I was also reading about the Spokane Valley Council in the current this afternoon, and they've been, they've got some money from like a library grant that the state gives out. So, I think collaborating with them on things like that, they're evidently going to build this huge 30,000-foot, square-foot library, and learning how they applied for this grant, what we would need to do for that, as you know, library is one of my interests. So, I, whether we have a special meeting, whether we do it before a regular council meeting, I think this would be a really good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to Councilmember Receivers, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I'm really asking this question of the council to get maybe just a temperature reading, but I'm going to go back to my comment of there've been a few rubs or conflicts between us and the Valley, and I'm a big believer in bringing the elephant in the room out so we can talk, because really in the council, I feel like we get a set of information. I can only imagine their council gets a set of information, and when it, you know, when these things happen, I like to believe that they have all good intentions in the world, and I'm curious if it's valuable to bring one of those elephants in the room out and just say, you know, we had an issue around the new Caterpillar facility, or I'm sorry, Western States Cap facility, the roads and things like that. And I wonder if it'd be valuable for us to have a conversation, or if we think it's going to, there's going to be a salt in the wound sort of a situation there, to bring it up. My intent would only be help the dialogue to say, what were you guys intending, and what are we intending, and is there potential to come up with, you know, mutual understanding of some of these sorts of projects, so we understand where they're going in the future. I can understand where that could be. It could turn out negative in conversation, but I'd like to believe that we could all look at this from a higher level and seek understanding for what the city of Spokane Valley was going for there. And I would like to use this time jointly between councils to talk about some of these problems that have popped up between us. So, the question's really to council, do you think that'd be beneficial, or do you think it'd be worth bringing those things up, or do you think that's, you know, it's in the past, leave it in the past?
I'll go to Councilmember Curts, and then I'll kind of give my opinion based on some conversations. But hey, go ahead, Councilmember Curts.
Well, I think that, I like that idea. I think as long as it is a smaller piece of our discussion, I think that'll be good. And I think if it's framed in the sense that, you know, we want to work together, we're here to, you know, build rapport like everybody was talking about, and how can we work together, all the opportunities, positive and negative, or some of them are shared between us where there's an overlap. So, here's an example of where something didn't go well between us. What did we learn from that? What could we have done better? And, you know, I think if it's framed in that way, and it's a kind of a, more of a strengths-based discussion versus a finger pointing, or bad feelings, or negativity, I think that if we can keep it on moving forward positively together, I'd be willing to be a part of that. I think that would be, that would be great. I think it's a good, solid example of how a lack of communication can go sideways and cost everybody money, and that's what we don't want to do. So, I do like that idea, not having heard what Chris said yet.
Yeah, great. Well, and Councilmember Curts, you pretty much said what I was going to say. You know, back, you know, 20-plus years in project management, you know, I've been a part of many, many what we call postmortems after a project, right? It's not finger pointing, it's going back to see what went well, what went wrong, how can we avoid it in the future. And I think if we stay on that path and kind of, you know, focus on what, how can we better handle those things in the future, based on what we've learned of the past experiences, I think if we can keep it on that path, I think it can stay a positive discussion. But I will, I'll have a follow-up discussion with Mayor Wick, because he's the one, you know, I was talking to about it previously, and kind of get his temperature on that, and then if it's okay, just kind of hold those dates open. I do think it would take, I think it'd end up being a longer meeting than just an hour, which is too long for either during the meeting or during our six to seven workshops. So, I don't expect it being, you know, more than 90 or 90 minutes to two hours, but if we can put that, put a question mark still on that one, if that's okay with everybody, let me get the feedback and take the temperature of where they are right now, and then I'll put, so in the next couple of days, we'll give an email to everybody, kind of give you an update, and we can try to figure those dates out. That's all right.
And not to belabor it, but what I heard from their city manager was it's really about projects that are in close proximity to both jurisdictions, as opposed to what Councilmember Receivers said, which is really more of a public policy slash strategic effort to work with, you know, our colleagues over in Spokane Valley. But certainly, the agenda is your guys to set. So, I'll get a list of the projects that they're interested. Certainly, it's those projects on Barker Road, South of Tranche. I think those are the big ones on their radar, perhaps some on Flora and/or Sullivan. Those are the general locations of what they mentioned.
Yeah, okay. Any more comment out there, Councilmember Curts? Excuse me.
Me, the goal of getting together is to have a dialogue about how we can work together. If it's just about whether they want us to support a project, they could send us that in an email or a letter. So, I think for me, the goal of getting together and spending time together in a meeting together is to actually have some sort of substantive dialogue about us, how we can work together. So, I don't particularly want to hear just a list of things they want our support with. I want to understand why, and I want to understand how we can work together.
Agreed. Councilmember Receivers.
I guess I've asked for additional council feedback, because you've heard from me, you've heard from Annie. Annie, I agree 100% of what you're saying. I'd rather a collaborative meeting be about how we can continue to work together, rather than a list of projects to solidly support. Are there other council members who would like to bring up things from the past and potentially, in the words of Stephen Covey, seek to understand so we can move forward, or do you see that being too big of a conflict?
Councilmember Dunn.
So, I would think that in considering what I think is in front of us, we could reflect on what was behind. When we talk about what might be a close jurisdiction project, we could talk to and reflect on how something has been previously set. I don't think necessarily we need to say, let's put on the table, let's go rehash the Caterpillar project. So, that's my perspective.
And I think it's all in how we manage it, right? It does not have to turn negative. It can be about, you know, collaboration going forward on those projects that are in close proximity to each other, and how do we handle those the best? All right, so we got a couple action items to take on it, Katie, so we'll follow up with everybody in the next couple of days.
Do we still think April is feasible, or should we push it out, Mayor?
Push it out.
We're still, it's just, well, we're back April 13th or 27th, maybe if we look at towards the 27th, in case we do have anything else that hits a higher priority on our list as a Livery Lake entity. I think that'll give us some time. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, on dates, I would prefer to be pushing it out further. I kind of look at, you know, we've been stymied the last year trying to get into talking about Trailhead and many other issues, City Hall and that type of stuff. If we're going to have extra meetings, I would really like to see us focus on, concentrate on things here in Livery Lake. So, although I'm supportive that we can get together with them, but I'm comfortable pushing the date out.
Agreed, for those things. Okay. All right, so item five, April 20th, regular meeting workshop. Mayor Protem, Kennedy, this is on the follow-up that we kind of discussed already, a little bit already with regards to Robert's Rules, roles, clarity, those kind of things.
Oh, we're talking about the Robert's Rules?
Item five, yes.
Yeah, Robert's Rules. Yeah, what was in there? It was kind of misleading. It's this follow-up special meeting with Ann McFarland. Now, the idea was not to follow up with Ann McFarland. She wouldn't be involved, but she gave us recommendations that we should look at with our rules and regulations, and I think that would be the ideal time that we can see what changes we want to make. I know that we have in our verbiage that it says the rules and regulations, that if there's any question, we automatically go to Robert's Rules and follow them. We don't follow all of Robert's Rules, nor does she recommend we follow all of Robert's Rules. So, I think it's important we have clarity there. So, it's very valuable. We spent a lot of money for that. We just haven't been able to have a discussion on it. So, that'll be, I think it'd be very productive for all of us.
Councilmember Foyer.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. If I can, I'd like to make a suggestion on the description regarding the item that Mayor Protem just identified. I would prefer we refer to it as a discussion. as a discussion geared towards Resolution twelve dash one five six E, and that's the policy that the Mayor Protem was talking about.
So how is that different than number six?
Well, yeah, so, yeah, so that's what I was, I was gonna say. So our number six is a review of city council's rules or procedure. So Councilmember Foer, are you, are you thinking on the twentieth, go, maybe go through it and go back, review it, and Mayor Protem as well? Go back and review those recommendations and how it might affect the ordinance, and then come back at the May fourth meeting and go in more, more depth in what the new wording would be?
Yes.
What are your thoughts?
That's exactly what I was going to suggest. There, I've already started on it. I haven't incorporated Ann's recommendations yet, but there is no way we are gonna get through that in one workshop.
Okay. Well, would you and Mayor Protem Kennedy be up for kind of collaborating on that a bit?
No.
Before the workshop?
Can't work with this guy. Nope, can't do it.
No way. No. I don't, I don't even know where this guy lives.
That's great.
We'll put you in a room and lock you in together. How's that?
No, that's fine.
All right. Okay, so that pretty much takes care of the April twentieth and May fourth then. Oh, Councilmember Kurtz, go ahead.
As we're talking about, so we were talking, we're doing in the council retreat, we're gonna talk about facilities and, and start moving forward and that stuff, and I want to make sure that we don't have the council retreat and talk about those things, and then not come back to it for another, you know, four or five months. So I would really love to have whatever our top three priorities are, pick a number, coming out of that meeting on the thirtieth, be some of our next in-order workshop discussions, because I think that we, we have, we've, we've lost time, and we need to get, get going on stuff. We wanted to have the, the, the meeting early in March, and, and I think, at least for me, the intent was that we would then start moving forward on some of these projects and figuring out how to fund them, and what to spend our money on this year, or what not to. So I don't, like, I, I love the idea of the Roberts Rules of Order. I know we spent money on that, but I also don't want to lose track of, of projects that benefit the citizens either, and not that Roberts Rules of Order doesn't, because it does, you know, but I hope that rambling made sense.
Well, I'm looking, just two seconds, Mayor Protem, so I'm looking at the calendar. Do we have anything on the pre-meeting workshop on April sixth that we know of yet? So that would be about a week later, Councilmember Kurtz, it would probably be a good timing to bring that back. So I'd like to hear some of the playoffs of it, Mayor Protem.
Yes, on the timeframe of that, now that I'm missing something, I don't see that that would be a long discussion on the Roberts Rules. I think we can preview what we have there now, look at some of our recommendations, see what we want to add, and some of the things we could highlight to maybe eliminate. I could be wrong, but I don't see that going lengthy discussion.
Okay, we're, I think we're kind of, I feel like we kind of hopped around for a second, so I need a point of clarity.
Okay, go ahead, Katie.
So Mayor Protem, when you mentioned Tom Bluebaker for three hundred fifty dollars an hour, you went and checked his availability, remind me which line, what number would he be speaking on? What would be the subject of his facilitation?
His would be on role clarity.
Role clarity. So which line was that?
Council, council, council role clarity. You know, we talked about it March fourth, but that, you know, wasn't going to work.
Well, that, that, that's the class.
Yeah. So you know what? Why don't we do this, Mayor Protem? If you want to find out what day he's available, and we can bring that back to the full council, so we can add it to our list, because I'm not seeing role clarity as a workshop specific with a facilitator.
Well, yeah, the, the dates, he's not available on, from the nineteenth to the twenty-third. I'm sorry, let me get back to the right one here. He's unavailable from the fifteenth to the twentieth. So he had said that if we decided we want to utilize him, we could certainly look at maybe the thirtieth, or any of those type of dates, or could, I would think go into the first part of April.
Okay, well, then we're back, looking at this, because we have our capital facilities plan on the thirtieth, so that we're back at April sixth. But, so we're, we're kind of juggling now. We've got the role clarity and a follow-up to the capital facilities plan discussion that Councilmember Kurtz brought up. So also looking at the counters, and then we've got the twentieth, we don't have, we do have, the, on the twentieth, we've got the follow-up for twelve dash one fifty-six E.
Councilmember Severs?
Yeah, sorry, I wasn't looking at my, my monitor, I'm trying to figure dates out. Councilmember Severs, did you have your hand up first?
I, I mostly just want to recognize what Councilmember Kurtz is bringing up, that I think that's excellent foresight, that it might be a good idea to just reserve a couple of workshops in a row. I don't know if it's one, two, or three. I don't, I don't know if we need more than one workshop to discuss our top three priorities and funding, and how we're gonna move forward on them, or if we need one workshop for each one of them, but it may be a good idea to reserve the, the, at least the next, I'm gonna say the next two workshops, specifically for follow-up to the retreat, rather than scheduling some of these pieces in, because I'm sure there will be some follow-up needed that we're gonna decide on, I'll retreat. I'm just thinking back to previous retreats.
Right. Okay. Mayor Protem, Kennedy, then I've got a thought.
I know, that's okay. Never mind. Thank you.
Okay. So, so I would, I wish I had a calendar up here with blocks that I could move along.
Six and the twentieth of April.
Okay, so, yes, we've got the sixth and the, well, the twentieth of April, we had the, the Roberts Rules follow-up on the recommendation. So here's, here's my, just two cents, and it's obviously up to you guys. If we do the follow-up, follow-up to the capital facilities on the sixth, which is just a week later, in the six o'clock workshop, could we do, oh, that would work, and then, sorry, I'm, I'm, the gears are churning. Can you see the smoke? Yeah, so what, let's think about follow-up to capital facilities at the six o'clock workshop on April sixth. Actually, know what, you know what, and I would, I'd like to hear some feedback on this. Maybe we, that should be during our sub, during our regular meeting, because if we're gonna be making decisions and moving things forward, that really should be in seven o'clock. Go ahead, Councilmember Foer.
Thank you, Mayor. So, looking at my calendar, can I suggest that we do capital facilities follow-up at our six o'clock workshop on April sixth and the twentieth, and we move item five, or six, or if you've combined them, I'm not sure what you've done yet, but I'm calling it Resolution twelve, for five, item five and six, and then just move item five and six, which is really the same, to May fourth.
Any objections to that from everybody? I'm getting a thumbs up. I got another thumbs up. Okay, so it looks like unofficially, we've got more thumbs up than not. So, so just to clarify that, so the sixth and the twentieth follow-ups on the capital facilities plan, and then moving, putting five and six together in the seven o'clock workshop on the sixth.
Quick question, just to confirm, I, you know, I think that's a really good plan, and we'll update this matrix. Were you guys looking for facilitation when we had the workshop on number five and six, or were you thinking of just a council discussion?
Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Council discussion.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too. Okay. Councilmember Dunn, if you had a question?
No, just a council discussion. I don't think facilitation is required.
Yep, agreed. Okay, all right, we got past six. All right, so the next one on here, we're talking, looking at July twentieth, so put on your, your hat for several months out, with regards to financial investment and policy workshop. Councilmember Severs, you were kind of looking at this as we go into budgets. See, so it's probably while we've got it in July, but if you want to go ahead and tackle that, and if you want to talk about different dates, we can look at that.
I'm mute. Oh.
Sorry, thank you. This is a refresher.
I didn't hear your mouth saying.
I was, I was mumbling, is why. I'll, I'll try to articulate. Refresher, this is probably just talking about some of our finance policy regarding the way that we budget and earmark specific dollars for the library, but we do not do it for the police department. And I'm not right now speaking in favor or against the way we do it, I'm just saying that I think it's worth, worthy of a discussion. And then a little bit about the investment policy regarding how we invest dollars for the city. So I think it's worthy of a discussion, but I'm gonna ask that we maybe push it into early August, or bring it earlier into July, and this is completely self-serving, it's because I'm realizing right now that I believe I'll be, I, I believe I'll be adding, who said go on fishing? No.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a wonderful guess. It's a wonderful guess, but I know a family reunion around the twentieth of July in Georgia, so, so my only ask would be that we do it either earlier or later. And I, I don't think there's any reason why we wouldn't do this in August, or even into early September. I don't think there's a major rush on this. I do think that, that the only precedent is prior to true budget season. I think it'd be good for us to be making some decisions if we want to make it prior to twenty twenty-two budget.
Thinking earlier. Go ahead, Mayor Protem, and then I've got a comment to make when you're done.
I, I certainly support Councilman Severs' idea there, that into September, July, or August or September would be fine.
So, so my, my thought on that is, you know, the staff starts working on the budget way, way before then, in fact, probably fairly soon. So I would probably, you know, like to hear more from, you know, the directors, if, if there might be changes to some of, some of those things, how early would you need that information, or guidance, that are affecting your budgeting?
So I would say the, the latter part of September into early October is all budget.
Okay.
But if they had a workshop in August or September, that's plenty of time. I think there's some philosophical questions that are being posed by Councilmember Severs, like, why do we earmark one department and not another? There's probably some policy discussions there that could take longer. So maybe July is the safer bet, but certainly August and September would work.
Well, we've got one, two, August is actually a three Tuesday month, so may, the first Tuesday in August is the third. Does that work for you, Councilmember Severs, since this is your baby? Okay. So that's not pushing it too far out. I, I don't want to be up to the last minute with the staff and everybody trying to put together the budget. August third, Ben, and this would be a six p.m. workshop? Yeah.
That's great. I appreciate it.
All right, now we've got two more on here. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Foer.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a follow-up question to our capital facilities plan, plan, as we go forward. If we, if, if we, and I'll speak for myself, if I have some specific questions that I'd like an answer to prior to the thirtieth, can we email those to, question mark? Katie?
Yeah, that'd be great, if you would email those to us, and then I will respond with a question and the answer to all the councilmembers, so they can all see the question and the answer. Along those lines, if, if you guys think it would be beneficial, Councilmember Foer, Kurtz, and Dunn, when I'm on the field trip, kind of behind the scenes in some of our facilities, I'd like to offer that again before the workshop, so some of the others of you have an opportunity to look at the police department, the library, City Hall, the public works yard, et cetera.
Yeah, I think that's gonna be really beneficial to get that in before that meeting as possible. So highly recommended. Okay. Thank you for that question, Councilmember Foer. All right, so then the last two items we have on here are just on here, this is tracking items for future considerations, so pending Parks and Arts Commission recommendation on the community sculpture, so I'm assuming we'll weigh in information from Parks and Arts before we can even schedule that. And then twenty twenty-two Lime Scooters, Councilmember Dunn, do you want to speak to that at all? Just, just keep it on there as a TPD?
Sometime next year.
Okay, got it. Okay.
Okay, so I think we have a plan, and we'll, I'll take it out, and thank you so much. This was a welcome. All right, so we will see, oh, go ahead, Councilmember, Mike.
Thank you, Chris. All right, question to Councilman Dunn. When you say next year, do you want to take it off the list now, so we don't continually see it each month, and then bring it up next year? Is that your idea?
Um, I think it's actually important that we keep a list of workshops. I call it in objective, and that removing items, I don't want to say sweeps it away from people's memory, but it's out there, and I think we will eventually establish a date.
I, I, I agree. You know, I like the idea that we have it on the bottom, the things we don't specifically have dates to, but the things we do want to address, even if it turns out to be next year. So we keep that subject in the councilmembers' minds. Thank you.
All right. All right, before we go, Katie's going to kind of run through what everybody's scheduled.
Okay, so starting with number one, you're gonna let Ann know if you're interested in going to the webinar, and as the mayor said, if we have a commissioner that wants to attend, they should also contact Ann, so we can get them registered. On number two, March sixteenth, term limits, this will be a discussion only, and potential discussion of put on the ballot or not, and, and the ob, the alternative would be to have council make the decision regarding term limits. And then the special meeting on an off Tuesday with the capital facilities is holding on March thirtieth. The workshop for the valley, we're gonna kind of do some more research on the agenda, and no firm date has been set. We are gonna get a list of projects that the county wants, or excuse me, the valley wants to talk about. And then I'm gonna go over my notes now. April sixth and twentieth at six p.m. will be follow-up workshops on the capital facilities plan, and then May fourth and, or thereabout, we will be discussing on the number five and six, related to rules and procedure and, excuse me, regarding roles and procedures. Specifically, this is oriented twelve dash one five six E, so that will be at the six p.m. workshop on May fourth. I think, oh, and then, excuse me, August third will be the six p.m. workshop on the financial policy. Do I have that right?
Sounds like it's me. Councilmember Foer first, and then Mayor Protem.
Just a question on the March thirtieth date, is it still everybody's anticipation that it will be in person?
I don't think we, I don't think we know yet, because we still have to have, we've done our internal evaluation on what we can do, the circulation, the air circulation here in City Hall, and this will come up more at our, at the seven o'clock meeting. It's different than the circulation at the police department and the library, so we'll have to think about that a little bit more. I doubt we will all be in person, just knowing where we are.
The challenge we have, as Mayor was saying, is if we, there are people calling these hybrid meetings, where they're in-person and they're virtual, and a lot of people are thinking there's benefit to keeping the hybrid meeting going forward. The challenge that we have is if we open the meeting to the public, and the public who wants to come can't, and the reason they can't is because we can't manage them, that's okay, as long as we have overflow for them. And the overflow that we have here at our City Hall does not have the air circulation, nor does it have the technology to support a hybrid meeting at this time. So I hate to be there of bad news, but hybrid meetings are a big challenge for us, Councilmember Severs.
Yeah, well, I think Mayor Protem was first, and then Councilmember Severs.
So does it, my question is, does it have to be in public? Because if it does, we don't have to use City Hall. We could find another location and have a public meeting that had a larger seating capacity and, and I'll say higher technology.
Well, I guess my, my question is, could we do the councilmembers in person and the public virtually? Because I think that's our next logical step, and we'll have to look at that, and see if we can get, make that work before that meeting, if that's sufficient for now. Okay, Mayor Protem, and then Councilmember Severs, sorry about that.
Yes, I, I'm gonna bring up a totally different subject, so I, I will defer to Councilman Severs if he had a question or comment on what Katie is talking about.
Yeah, I, I would hope that we can make it in person, or if we need, can make it hybrid with council in person and public. council in person and public via virtual, that'd be great. If we need to go somewhere else, it'd be wonderful. We've done that in the past. It's worked great. So I would hope that we could do it in person. That's just my take.
Okay, great. And now, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. What we don't have on here is a direction on the clarity for council on it. Does a council want me to talk to Tom Brubaker further to see specific dates that he is available and won't be available on moving ahead to set a date? What's a council's pleasure?
I think that sounds like a good plan. And do we have a backup mic if we can't secure him within the reasonable timeframe?
Yes.
Great. I think that works. Any objections to Mayor Protem's question? Sounds like, oh, Councilmember Fuller.
Not a question, just a comment. Yeah, I'd be in favor of that, but it looks like our next available is May 18th and June 1st.
Thank you. All right, well, we will keep working on that item. All right. All right, if there is nothing else for the workshop, we've got about 11 minutes until our seven o'clock. So everybody go get a drink of water and we'll see you back here in a little less than 11 minutes.
Hey, Phil. Councilman Fuller?
Sir, yes, sir.
I drove over by the east entrance, or excuse me, west entrance of the property up there and looking at our yard and everything. And it's amazing, all the construction going on, on the east or west entrance there of the development there.
Oh, yeah, they're getting weather. They're not wasting any time taking advantage of the beautiful weather. There's a little bit of frost in the ground. We dug a trench today, little bit of frost, not much. I wonder if they got a permit?
Yeah, we'll have to run that by. What's interesting, where all that was so much farmland for years and years, and a lot of it was probably deposited up there. You look at that soil and it is just rich, rich soil.
You're welcome. Okay, I'll make sure I have everybody in order again today. One, two, three, four, five, Dan, come on, Dan again.
Here. How do you get everybody grouped together? How are you doing?
So if you take, if you click on view up at the top right and you do the side-by-side gallery, then you can make, you can drag the window pane where you're seeing the agenda to make it a little bit smaller. And like I've got mine expanded, so my gallery is like two wide and six deep. And then you just like you like drag and move apps on your phone, kind of the same thing. You can click on somebody's rectangle and move their, move them around. So I moved mine around so I could have all the council members on the top.
Thank you.
And I put staff underneath. So that way I have you guys all in one view and I don't have to keep jumping around looking for you.
Well, thank you.
I don't have my, the normal statement from the report of the meeting. Oh, sure. Okay. All right, so I'm going to, seven o'clock, I guess. All right, welcome, everybody. I don't have the normal pre-prepared statement for the meeting, so I'm going to wing it today. So basically, we are, we are, welcome to our March 3rd, March 2nd council meeting. Hello? Who is, is somebody trying to jump in? Okay, I'll start. So welcome to our March 2nd council meeting. Per the governor's instructions, we are meeting remotely today. Those staff members with me in person today are City Administrator Katie Allen and IT guru Todd Henderson, who's helping run the meetings. There is a, there's opportunity for citizen comments a little bit later on in the meetings. Please send any requests for public comments in the chat to Todd. It will only be going to Todd. It will not go to the rest of the council. He will notify us who is requesting to speak. So I'll do roll call when it comes to that time. So Mayor Protem, and turning it over to you.
Would you like to have, I've got invocation?
Oh, yeah, sure. Sorry, it's been a heck of a day. It feels like Friday already. All right, so I didn't hit anybody up for the invocation, so I guess I'll do that. Dear Lord, thank you so much for being here with us today, keeping us all safe from COVID and helping our loved ones and friends and family and the rest of the country heal from this devastating pandemic watchover. Those who protect us, first responders, our doctors, nurses, teachers, everybody who might be suffering from this disease. We ask that you guide us today in our discussions, that we make the right discussion, right decisions for our community and that we are able to put our, any differences aside and open our minds to hearing others' opinions. In your name we pray. Amen. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, now, you're on, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. You're asking for a roll call at this point.
Yeah, so we've got, so Mayor, Mayor Protem, obviously we've got you here. Councilmember Woodruff?
Here.
Councilmember Kurt?
Present.
Councilmember Fuller?
Yes, here, yes, yep.
You sound like me, don't they?
See.
Okay, and Councilmember Dunn?
Happy Tuesday.
Okay. Dan, I lost your picture, so if I, if you need to say something before I find you and move you up to the top, please let me know.
You can drag.
Well, I can't, I can't find you to drag.
It's above.
Okay. All right, so, so, I know we do have one council member missing. Councilmember Langford had called in to say he would not be available tonight.
Make a motion.
Excuse, Councilmember, sorry, move it, excuse, Councilmember Langford.
Second.
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 Mayor Protem, I know we usually like a short reason. I believe he has family matter tonight.
Medical challenges, yes.
All right, so we will go ahead and excuse Councilmember Langford. All right, we move on to agenda.
Vote.
Oh, sorry, God. I think I just need to restart today. So all in favor of, excuse me, Councilmember Langford, say aye.
Aye.
Three, four, five, six, all right. Any opposed? Okay. All right, Councilmember Langford is excused. Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. On the agenda approval for the council's consideration, we have two additions for consideration. One was to add an executive meeting in regards to employee issue. And the second would be item number, on number nine workshop to add a GSI discussion.
Move to approve the agenda with amendments.
Okay. And then one more, we got Councilmember Dunn?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'd like to strike Agenda Line 13, second read on budget amendment. And reflecting on the actions for the library, I'd like for our new library director to be more present and engaged to ensure that the direction that we take in capital funding is right.
Thank you. So we had.
I move the agenda, move the agenda with all three amendments.
A second then.
I move the second, Councilmember Fuller.
Yeah, just a point of clarification, Councilman Dunn said second read, it's still the first.
Correct.
Yeah, we're deferring the first read.
Thank you.
There's a motion and second on approving the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? No, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the amendment is accepted as amended. Okay, now we are, we have citizen comments. So if there's anybody who has, okay, so just keep in mind that citizen comments are limited to three minutes. We'll get a little bit of a warning at two and a half if someone gets that far, and then we will move on from there. So we do have, it looks like our clock's already running, so there we go. So go ahead, Tom Stanley. Make sure we can hear you first. Go ahead, Tom.
Can you hear me?
Now, now we can.
Hello? Okay, perfect, sorry. I had two mutes. All right, thank you again for letting me speak. I'm here tonight to clear up some misconceptions from my letter that was entered into public comment back in January. Let me be clear, my letter was in no way an attack on Shane Brickner's family. My letter in no way insinuated that Shane Brickner's doctor is lying. To say it was is simply deflecting the real reason of my letter. What was the real intention of my letter? Did Shane Brickner at any time while serving as mayor live outside of Liberty Lake City limits? I'm asking this question is not pettiness and is not baiting the council, as Tom Sauber mentioned in his letter when he listed no facts and only listed opinions on this matter. It is my right as citizens of Liberty Lake to ask questions of my elected local government. I feel some members of this elected body are trying to cover up this issue. In the letter that I presented, two legal documents that Shane Brickner listed his address outside of city limits. The night my letter was read into public comment, Shane Brickner was prepared to respond. However, he chose not to address the facts. Those facts are, based on the evidence I provided in my letter, Shane Brickner was not eligible to hold public office for the city of Liberty Lake from October 30th, 2020, to December 31st, 2020. And I referenced RCW 42 dot 12 dot 010. Or if Shane Brickner's address is not correct address on those two legal documents, then he lied on said legal documents. In closing, I have a few questions for the mayor and council members. Madam Mayor, can you live outside of city limits and still be mayor of City of Liberty Lake?
This is not a question and answer session, so I'll take that as rhetorical.
Okay, so you're not going to answer if you can live outside of Liberty Lake and be mayor? Okay, gotcha. Also, who is, okay, I'd like to know, I would, myself and other citizens would like to know who's conducting the investigation into this matter. And also the previous question I answered, I'd like, I think citizens need to know that answer as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we will be addressing this later on in the meeting. Thank you very much. Do we have any other citizen comments, Todd? Okay, all right, so hearing no more citizen comments at this time. Announcements, proclamations, or special presentations? We do not have any. So we'll move on to city council reports, mayor reports, city administrator reports. So city council, is there anything any of you guys would like to report on since our last meeting? Councilmember Dunn?
Thanks, Chris. So I would say I did have a chance to visit with Spokane Valley Fire Chief Brian Collins in a brief exchange for some recording for work in their operations. I would just share the interesting casual observations Brian shared in the work of the Spokane Valley Fire Board, that that board actually is trying to consider how to continue on in online meetings because they, because of the tremendous response of actual citizen engagement that, that that board for the meetings that they've had have had more true, I'd say legitimate participation and engagement from their community than for their in-person meetings. So interesting to see that. Also, I just would pitch that the walking tour, I'll call it, of city facilities was invaluable. Special thanks to Katie and Trevor Reagan for being able to recognize what are, I'd say even small and simple observations and provide even basic and functional knowledge. So always learn something and very grateful for that time.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurt?
I wanted to echo what Councilmember Dunn said, that I really enjoyed the tour. I enjoyed the history of how things came to be. I enjoyed meeting a lot of people that I haven't met before and just seeing the facilities and hearing, I think, the pride of ownership and the care that our city staff take of our facilities. It just, again, it was pretty awesome. So thank you guys for taking the time to take us all around and tell us all the things. It was very nice.
Thank you. Councilmember Fuller?
Yeah, as the third party to that group, just want to say, inside joke, I did not find what I was looking for at every, if any of the other council members decide to go do that round, plan on a good, what were we, four hours, five hours?
Bring a snack.
Bring a snack. Thank you.
I'm not going to ask what you were looking for. Okay, Mayor Protem, did you have anything?
No, I do not, Mayor.
Okay, all right, so jump over to my report. So I will start off by semi addressing Mr. Stanley's comments from this meeting in the past. So recently, a public comment was received during the city council meeting concerning former Mayor Shane Brickner's residency prior to his resignation. I wanted to let the public know that the city is evaluating the allegations made in the public comment and has requested an outside review of the allegations. Once the review is complete, the city will be able to provide further information. So then, rest of my report, so I'll try to make this as short and sweet as I can. More GSI fly-in events since our last meeting, I won't go into much detail on that, it really wasn't, they were jurisdictions pretty far from here. I don't know if some of you have followed any of our adopted Springtown effort, not totally a city thing, but it was a community event that was put together. The idea actually came from my cousin who moved here last summer, and we found a town in Texas of 300, 3,000 people. And amazingly, their, part of their motto is the best place to live, work, and play in, not the name of their county, I think it's Parker County. I got ahold of the city administrator, found out some of their needs. They had, the police department and public works, they had 25 people who were working 24/7 with NAFTA in between. So we sought some donations and of course, and one of our volunteers extraordinary, Mark Saba, was able to get, he was about $300 in gift card donations from, between Yotes, our Safeway and a couple other Safeways. We had tons of citizens bring goodies or personal care items. And we were actually able, last Thursday night, we were able to pack 42 care packages, enough for one of each of their staff members to kind of show them appreciation and thank you for doing all the work they're doing for their little town in Texas during their, you know, having no water and pipes breaking and no electricity. And the packages are due to be there Thursday. UPS store here in Liberty Lake was awesome and donated the cost of shipping those 11 very heavy boxes. So I'll be getting out a thank you letter to everybody, but you know, I want to, you know, I just love this community so much and how much everybody stepped up to join in and put this together. I was just amazed at everything we had. And again, special thanks, thanks to Mark and Karen Saba for helping and they came and helped pack the bags with us as well. On a more serious note, so COVID phase three, what does phase three look like? We have no idea. May Woodward has a monthly mayor's, regional mayor's meeting. So at our last meeting, we talked about, you know, our challenges being border cities. talked about, you know, our challenges being border cities to Idaho, which has a much different philosophy on it, opening up. So I think it was 12 or 13 regional mayors, you know, signed a letter to the governor, it was fairly lengthy letter, saying this is what we, as border cities, need out of Phase 3 to compete, really with what's going on in Idaho, and to keep our business here and keep our businesses going. It wasn't about, these are the parameters we need to meet in order to go into Phase 3, that's for the experts and the scientists, right? But with regards to the needs of our communities. And so that letter went off, signed by all 12 or 13 of us, to the governor's office on Friday, and I need to follow up with Mayor Woodward, because she actually was able to have a follow-up call with the governor, and apparently the letter was received very well, I'm not quite sure what all that entails, but it was a positive note. So I'll continue to keep everybody updated on that process. So hopefully, hopefully we've helped spur the governor onto a little bit different thinking about our eastern region, because we do have some special needs over here because of how Idaho is opening up. There, there's an item that Katie's going to be addressing later with regards to a possible sewer tax from the, from the county, from the city, on some utility services that has the potential of affecting about 1,100 of our residents. And the disappointing thing about the whole process was, as I found out about it second hand, nobody had contacted anybody here at the city about, about this issue, and she'll get into more detail. So, you know, I'm really pushing hard at some of these board of directors meetings to, to be more informed of what's going on. It kind of feels like sometimes we're in smaller cities and we're not as small anymore, that nobody's involving us in, even keeping us in the loop on what's going on. So I'll let Katie get into more detail on that. The other, I just have two more things to kind of hit here. I went to a great, a great webinar, I think it was MRSC, facilitating great online meetings. And so it was a great hour, well-spent, with regards to getting creative in our online meetings, and I'll be getting some of these ideas to the council, see if we want to implement, and things are very easy to implement. But the interesting thing was, is that, you know, they brought up some things that we probably really hadn't thought of. How do we, how do we keep the technologically challenged involved if we're doing online meetings? How do we, how do we make sure we are servicing people with maybe hearing issues or things like that? So those are the things we need to consider as we're going forward with these, probably these hybrid meetings. And to Councilmember Dunn's point earlier, we're seeing, based on the feedback from some of the other cities in that meeting, we are also, they are also reporting much higher amount of citizen engagement and participation because of the virtual meetings. So I look forward to getting to the point where we can do, you know, a hybrid approach with, you know, some staff in the council here in person, and still being able to have the citizens engaged virtually, because, you know, hey, what's better than being able to dial into meetings, keep saving your video off and listening in while you're having your dinner, you know, sitting there in your bunny flippers, right? So whatever we can do to keep the citizens engaged is huge. And then last but least, we have two planning commission positions open. I sent an email out just, just before the meeting to the applicants for the council positions, just letting them know. I know everybody, every one of them wants to be involved, so planning commission meetings don't fit with everybody's schedule, they're kind of late in the afternoon, but I'm hoping that either somebody in our audience today, or one of the council members applies for one or two of those positions. So I guess we move on to Katie, I hope I didn't steal too much from you.
No. All, it's all good. So let's start off, Todd, can you print my report so we can follow along? I'd rather answer your questions on the details related to the 20% sewer tax that's being discussed. Hopefully, all of you have had a chance to read the letter, and what I'm asking is that you all support this letter, and I'll go get into more detail by putting your signature to it. When we're done with this meeting, I'm going to print it off, and I will put it in the mailbox room. And if you have time, we'll swing by and sign it, I'd really appreciate it. If you don't have time and you're okay with it, I'll swing by your house and get your signature, whichever works better. Our goal is to get it out by the end of the day Friday. So what is this all about? Sean and I have had many conversations today, and he's going to give you the legal update. What I'm going to let you know is that the Spokane County Treatment Facility is located inside the city of Spokane. There's recent case law that allows a jurisdiction to put a utility tax on gross revenue on that facility. So if you are familiar with their service area, it's basically all of Spokane Valley, a good portion of it, all of Millwood, and a portion of our city in the River District, about 1,130 homes are located inside Spokane County Sewer Service Area. By putting a 20% utility tax on those, on the gross revenue, which would be on the county, then the county would pass that tax on to our residents, and probably with a surcharge, so that the county can recoup the cost of managing the collection of the utility tax. So the letter basically says two things. One is, it says, you know, we wish we would have heard this firsthand, it's unfortunate that we learned about it secondhand from Spokane Valley. Spokane Valley also have, have a letter that I shared with you. And the other thing it asks for going forward, please keep us directly involved in any activities that impact our residents. So it also says that we oppose the taxing of our residents for this purpose. So you all have a copy of it. Sean is going to, we've had a lot of phone calls today with attorneys, and Millwood, the Valley, the county, and hopefully ourselves are all on the same page. But at this time, Sean, I'm going to ask if you have anything to add, and then we can take questions from the council.
Sure.
If you have a question.
Well, why don't we let, Sean, why don't we let you go ahead, and then we'll take the questions from the council.
Sure, thanks, Mayor. So a few things. One is, obviously, as Katie indicated, we learned late last week of this circumstance that ended up generating the letter that the council has been provided to notify the city of Spokane with regard to what we think the council and mayor would believe that should be the response. In addition, at this point, it's our understanding that the impact is not only the city of Liberty Lake, Spokane County residents, it's Mil, city of Millwood residents, city of Spokane Valley. And the number of people that would impact the individuals or residents of the city of Spokane is very, very minute. The substantial majority, if not all of them, are in those jurisdictions. And as Katie mentioned, it was, you know, information that we were, we're not made aware of, and, you know, potentially could have significant impact. Not only is it a 20-plus percent proposal to gather forward, but there's also the possibility of wanting to retroactively go back and collect for a number of years in the past. So it's a significant circumstance with regard to the tax that could impact a number of residents within the city of Liberty Lake. And where we are at this point is the four jurisdictions, including Liberty Lake, working together to try to discuss this issue with the city of Spokane, both legislatively, legally, administratively, moving forward. And along those lines, the attorneys for all those jurisdictions, including myself, had conversations, or I had conversations with them this afternoon, about entering into a, what's called a common interest agreement relative to the attorney's discussion about legal opinions and processes for, you know, addressing this. Primarily, that issue is so that we can have dialogue amongst the jurisdictions with regard to what legalities and positions that we would have moving forward, and to preserve those circumstances as the dialogue continues and move forward with, with the city of Spokane. It's still, there's still more information to be learned, and both from Liberty Lake and the other jurisdictions, because this has come up here just recently. And so I think there's still more facts to be gathered and understanding from the city of Spokane's position. But from my perspective, and certainly any questions that may have, would be for myself to engage with the other jurisdictions and have an agreement with the other attorneys for those jurisdictions to address this issue. Now, any agreement that we would have would not preclude the city from withdrawing from the agreement, or from pursuing any potential claims or other issues that may arise with the other jurisdictions that were involved. But it preserves the opportunity for the conversation and the dialogue amongst the council, and to figure out a path forward, both legally and maybe other means for doing so. So I'll pause there for a minute and see if there's any questions.
Council receivers?
Sean, Katie, Mayor, I appreciate the work you guys have put into this. I'll share that my concerns here are that, I hear that there's a very minute number of residents over the four jurisdictions, and my concern is that there's a, that at 20%, are we offering up a, are we offering up more than our fair share of the percentage over the costs? And whether there's an disproportionate amount of money being, being paid towards this. I'm also curious if there's, what the monetary amount this would mean to our citizens. But is there a, because we're talking about over 1,000 of our residents, that's over 10% of our residents, the way I'm, the way I understand our current population, is there a place that we can go, go and start gathering info on this that you guys are aware of?
The estimates I've heard, council receivers, are anywhere between $200 to $400 per household a year.
Okay.
And just so, you know, I have a conversation to talk to, so I have a conversation to talk to Commissioner Cooney today, we were meeting on a separate topic, but this did come up, and the county is fighting it as well.
So the county and the Valley have both hired special counsel to advise them, Millwood and ourselves, so we're going to just stay part of the group and share information. Yeah, so just to be clear, I think almost 80,000 people in Spokane Valley have accounts with Spokane County, excuse me, Spokane Valley have accounts with sewer service from the county. So this is, has major impact throughout the eastern portion of the county.
And I believe, and I believe, Mayor, too, that, I haven't confirmed this, but it's my understanding that it would be the entire city of Millwood.
That's what I understand.
So I'll, again, just voice my concern that, that our citizens are going to take an inproportionate share of this, just this tax that just all of a sudden got thrown at us. So I, I hope that we can all agree that we should sign this letter and, and continue to fight this for our citizens' sake.
Any other questions or comments from the council on this?
Okay. So the letter will be in the mailbox room, and if your signature's not there by day noon on Friday, I'll probably be calling you and see if I can get it. Our goal is to get a copy of our letter to Spokane City by Monday, and then with copies to all the other jurisdictions that are impacted as well. Okay, with that moving on, so COVID-19, the numbers are coming down, the daily numbers are coming down, the vaccinations are coming up, so that's good. Phase 3 discussion, as the mayor mentioned, are underway. And one of the things that I just wanted to mention, and I have a vote as number B under this item, the, the directions to the mayor really are not very clear when it comes to public meetings, public gatherings, so to speak, and events. So what I wanted all the R council to know is that Gen Camp is on a committee with other jurisdictions, policymakers, and elected officials related to how we take events in our community and address the COVID requirements. And so whether it's the Easter egg hunt, or it's the spring green, or spring bulky waste event, what we want to do to know is that we're at the table, listening to what is going to be possible. I had a phone call from Rotary this afternoon, and they want to have a memorial display for fallen veterans on Memorial Day. And so these, these are all in the works, as is of our sale. So we're at the table talking about what is possible, and what policies we should be pursuing that would allow a safe gathering of our citizens. And then finally, on the operations side, nothing has changed since my last report, but I do want to let you know flexibility is something that's huge. And on the operations of City Hall, we're just kind of holding our own status quo, if you will. It seems to be working, people are getting permits, applications are coming in, Lisa is very, very busy. Our finance side is keeping pace with the technology needs of what they're doing, and so we're just kind of, kind of hold with the current operations for the remainder of March. If something changes, will change, but at this point in time, our number one goal is to provide service to our community, and we want to do it safely and responsibly. And so I think that's happening, so at this time, we're just going to pretty much hold the pattern right now at City Hall through the end of the month. Then tours of city facilities, I appreciate the comments from our council members that attended the last tour. Would love to have Councilmember Woodruff on this tour. Later in March, because our capital facilities planning meeting is March 30th, and so basically, it does take three to four hours, I'll, I've learned something, I need to bring snacks for the, for the tour. But this is really for you guys, it's your tour, to look at what we have. We went into the barn at Rocky Hill, we went into the public works yard, we looked at so many facilities. Trailhead, we spent quite a bit of time at Trailhead, and it would really be a picture worth of thousands of words. And so I don't have a day in mind, but Councilmember Woodruff, if you have a couple days I know are better than others, if you let me know, then I'll reach out to the other council members and see if they want to join us. Okay, moving along, Trailhead netting. I saw on my phone it's going to be over 50 degrees this week. So the good news is, Trailhead netting should be here tomorrow, takes a couple days to install it, and so hopefully by this weekend or early part of next week, our netting will be up at Trailhead Golf Course. So I'm sure there's a lot of golfers that are very excited about that. The 23 acre land transaction is moving forward, and Sean, I was going to ask you, if you're still on, if you could give us an update on the transaction?
I don't have any additional information. Obviously, the agreement's been executed by the parties, and so we'll just move forward with the closing, which will be in the beginning of April.
So real quick, I actually got a voicemail from Bijake, I don't know why he sent me the voicemail instead of you or Sean, but they'd like to close on or before April 2nd, so I let him know I would get with you two tonight on that.
Okay, so April 2nd, we'll have a, the land will be handed over, the transaction will be complete. And then moving on, we have several recruitment underway. The library director position is being screened right now by our trustees, and I greatly say this to Heidi, our trustee, who have narrowed it down to the top candidates, which they will be interviewing, I believe, tomorrow, so tomorrow afternoon. After that, then their recommendations will go to the mayor, and we'll just keep you posted as this moves along. Our police officer laterals, Damon continues to get really good applicants expressing an interest. And also, the mayor mentioned the planning commission, I think we have two openings. And Lisa, remind me, what's the date that we warm the applications in, by the end of March?
Yes, yes, the end of March. Yes, and we're also, we're also in the midst of our recruitment for the project manager.
Oh, excuse me, I didn't get that added. The project manager, we were, we are reviewing, when I say we, it's really Lisa and Ben, are reviewing a number of applicants that we've received for the project manager position. So I should have... So I should have added that to my list. Um, the other thing, um, RJ, I'll just give you a heads up, the flinky lease is coming to, um, an end, if you will. And so RJ has mentioned wanting to do a month-to-month lease, but RJ, please, uh, fill in the blank.
Uh, so March 31st is their, their last six month lease that's up. We, we understand that they have a new place to move into. So I've reached out to Chewy to get back to me about what their intentions are, if they have a move out date or anything like that. And it would be, it would make more sense for us just to do month-to-months, because we know that some point's going to end, so.
Real quick question, RJ, so if they go month-to-month or we, um, I, I'd be curious to know what we are asking for from them regarding to notice.
Okay. Yeah, so that's, that's, I've got to, uh, talk to Chewy about if that is, um, something he's good to do. That's what I'm wanting to, but then we will have a very specific what the, uh, what the date is. So if he could give me a date or reasonable date, I can have that included in the addendum as well.
RJ, when do you think the addendum will come back to the council? Do you have, uh, early April?
Uh, either March 16th or I'll have it on for the first one in April.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah, Councilmember Foyer.
A couple of questions regarding that. Um, first one, uh, any, any sort of a guess, six months, nine months, a year, on how long they'll remain?
Um, I'm going to guess it's probably early 2022, because I don't know when that building is going to be finished.
Okay, so is there a reason why we want to go to month-to-month right now and not do another six month?
Uh, no, other than, um, other than I don't have to bring it back to you in six months. Um, if we're just establishing it, that's one advantage to it, but also it gives us both sides some more flexibility in case something changes. Cause we're still talking about Trailhead moving forward, what we want to do, if we want to make any moves sooner or later. But we can do another six months too, if that's, if that's more council's desire.
Uh, I'm just looking to see if that is going to be part of the discussion, so sounds like it would be maybe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, um, and then Lisa's going to give us a construction update.
Uh, Katie, um, so as I'm sure you're all very well aware, Harvard Road Bridge widening and ramp improvements are under construction. Um, they've begun to remove the bridge barrier and part of the deck. And as a result, we're seeing night closures all this week on I-90, um, and that from 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM with single lane closures starting at 7:00 PM. And, uh, the, the closures are going to be eastbound Tuesday, Thursday and Friday this week and, uh, westbound on Wednesday. And we're also seeing daily shoulder and, and single lane closures on Harvard Road from 9:00 AM to 3:30 PM each day this week. Uh, Kramer Parkway, um, as you all know, is off the pause list and, um, we are expected to go out to bid within the next week or so. Um, Ridgeline High School traffic signal construction is anticipated to resume by the end of the month. Um, with legacy ridge traffic signal, we're currently at 60% design and we are actually waiting for a response from Liberty Lake Land Company about whether or not they're interested in participating in a four-way signal for when that land eventually gets developed. Um, pedestrian crossings, um, we're looking at, at the flashing beacons at, at Wind Rock and Autumn, uh, Country Vista and Eagle Street and Country Vista and Eagle Bend. And we anticipate those going out to bid by the end of the month. So you should, uh, hopefully be seeing a, a, a word of contract by the end of April. Um, Pavilion Park irrigation, that's also likely to resume installation, um, in the next month or so. And the Public Works Yard, Stephen is, um, investigating prefab buildings and, uh, uh, with the water installation to occur this spring. Uh, and last but not least, the Stormwater Master Plan, we are waiting on the grant agreement from a colleague that will be coming back to you and, uh, the funds are anticipated to be available in June. So that's it for our construction update. We're not busy though.
Yeah, if you added up all those costs, I think that's a huge load for you and your team, Lisa. Thank you so much. Um, and then finally I wanted to end on a high note. Um, there is a chance that we're going to have our spring bulky waste event. If you recall, this is something that generally happens in the spring. We did not have this event last year and we've been in conversations with the, um, voice management. And this is where city of Liberty Lake residents getting, um, a coupon, so to speak, that they bring. And it is an opportunity to donate to Go Goodwill, um, to get rid of some of your bulky weights or to, um, provide some spring green stockpile. So it's kind of a spring cleanup, if you will, and we're working on a date. So with that Mayor, that concludes my report.
Great. If somebody has anything else to report, I will jump in and embarrass Jen, um, real quick. So, um, actually Katie's probably more, more, um, well-versed in exactly what the program is. But, um, our own Jennifer Camp will be graduating this Friday to the Women's Leadership Academy.
Yep.
Yep, and Katie knows a lot about the academy. So if you can just give us a short description of, of what poor Jen's been going through, um, that'd be great.
So, um, W C M A stands for Washington Spinning Managers Association. And every year they put together a women's academy for leadership. And this has been a very challenging year, uh, because of COVID. And generally speaking, you would fly over to the west side of the state and really get exposed to a lot of connections and tools and great speakers. In fact, the keynote is, uh, former mayor, or former governor Christine Gregoire. So Jen has stayed true to this, um, educational commitment. And, um, I hear she's a rock star and we know that she's a rock star and other people know that she's a rock star. And, um, she's graduating. I asked her what her GPA was, but she wouldn't tell me. Um, but they do have a grad, a virtual graduation, uh, ceremony this Friday, um, this Friday morning. So yay for Jen.
Congratulations Jen. I know she conveniently has her video off.
She has her video off.
Thank you.
Well deserved, well deserved, yes. Okay, so I guess we're moving to workshop discussions. Um, so I asked to have this hopefully short workshop added because the, um, the GSI agreement was under consent agenda and, um, nobody had really seen it until it came out in our packet. So I just wanted to have a few minutes to discuss, answer any questions, um, before we get to the consent agenda. Um, I've got a couple of questions, but I wanted to, um, leave it to you guys first. If there's any questions or comments you have about the agreement. Councilmember Woodruff.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I was reviewing the agreement and it seems like a fairly standard one. I also went ahead and looked at the GSI website and in particular the Advantage Spokane. I clicked through to the Liberty Lake, um, portion of that, just to see what we're getting. Um, as many of you know, I'm, I'm, I'm all for getting some bang for our bucks. Uh, so I do have a couple of questions after reading through everything. Uh, the agreement says that they give reports and analytics, uh, on a regular basis. And I was wondering if we, anybody can let me know what those reports refer to? What, what are the analytics and are they helpful to us? Uh, the other thing I would like to know if possible is, are we able to link clicks on that Liberty Lake section of Advantage Spokane with actual follow-up, uh, with either businesses or people potentially moving here? Seemed like it was mostly geared to businesses, but i- is there a follow-up that we know? Okay, we have these clicks on those, uh, on those pages. Does that translate into a follow-up and possibly businesses actually coming here? Um, thank you.
Sure, and I'm actually going to defer to both Lisa and RJ on this, because Lisa was key in the Advantage Spokane, um, project. And RJ's been working on the agreement. So I'm, I'm going to see if one or both of them would like to address that question. I did notice, Holly, I did the same thing today. I got, I, just to make sure and the, at least on my connection, the Liberty Lake piece of the page, as I scrolled down, was really jumpy. Um, so that's a whole other discussion.
Yeah, um, Mayor, I, I noticed the same, I was looking at it on my iPad. So I'm glad to hear that you were having problems too, because I thought maybe it's just my old iPad. But, uh, I could get down as far as the education level of the people of Spokane and then it would jump down to the bottom of the page. And then every time I tried to scroll further down to education, this brought me back to that. So, uh, letting me know it wasn't just my iPad.
Okay, so neither of us are crazy. So I'll, I'll, I can straighten those two on that. But Lisa and RJ, if you, if you'd like to weigh in on, um, Councilmember Woodruff, uh, questions?
Yeah, so, so the analytics that are available and we can click on, um, there's, I've got a login that I can go in. I can't say that I've checked it out very often, frankly, because it's just, um, it hasn't been as high priority as some of the other things I've been working on. But, um, but we do have the ability to see how many clicks. Um, we do, we do have the ability to see how many returns, um, uh, like, um, visitors, et cetera. Um, I will pass on the, the, your comments regarding the jumpiness, um, uh, on the, on the, uh, on the, um, that you were experiencing. Um, I hadn't seen that, but I haven't been on the page in, in a, a little bit. Um, so, but yes, we do have analytics. Um, I don't, we, we can follow it. There's more things that we can do if we had a media person who was, we can, we can create, um, links to other, um, information that we might have on our website, et cetera. Um, and if we, uh, again, if we had somebody who, um, was available to actively be involved in the, uh, you know, public information officer or something like that, we could do a lot more with it. But it's, um, i- it's, um, uh, it's not a huge priority, um, i- in the scheme of priorities that I personally am working on.
Maybe one of the other things we can follow up for you, Councilmember Woodruff, is, is from GSI's perspective, what do they do when they see those clicks and how many, uh, inquiries they get for Liberty Lake as well?
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Council receiver.
Um, wanted some feedback, uh, about the analytics involved here, um, Councilmember Woodruff. I, I'll just, uh, voice a, um, an idea that I value what GSI does for our region. And I, it's difficult, I think, to put it into, um, quantitative measurement sometimes when you have an organization that's doing their best to market for our region. And it, sometimes it's not about what businesses specifically come to our city. But I'll, I'll use the term a, a rising tide raises all ships. So if a major business comes to our region, whether it be Spokane, Spokane Valley, um, out on the west plains somewhere that, uh, the, the employees that show up to that business may end up living in our city. That raises our sales tax base, that, that, um, raises our citizenship. And, uh, and we get a lot of positive feedback from our citizens that, hey, their business is not located in Liberty Lake, but their, uh, but their home is located in Liberty Lake. So for that reason, I'll just voice a support for GSI and their efforts that I think it's important that we continue, uh, to fund or, or to be members of GSI through our city, uh, given what their regional, uh, focus is for us. And I do think that they, that the fact there are some Liberty Lake hits and some, uh, that they're recruiting for the overall region, that we need to be competitive in our region as we continue. And they're just part of our competitiveness, uh, on a national market base. So I'll just share that I, my, um, uh, my hope is that we continue to support GSI, uh, year in, year out, at least at this point.
Uh, Councilmember Woodruff, and then Councilmember Dunn.
Um, thank you, Councilmember Receivers. Uh, please don't take my questions as not supporting GSI. I was just curious as to what kind of information we do get from their reports and their analytics. Uh, I remember being at the council meeting where GSI first presented Advantage Spokane as the website and asked us to contribute to that, and I supported that at that time and, and I still do. Um, I just had those questions, but thank you, I, I really appreciate your comments.
Councilmember Dunn.
Hey, I, I just also voice support for GSI as an organization, as a historic combine of an economic development, uh, agency and a chamber of commerce. Uh, it serves to really drive businesses and business locations in the community, uh, the greater region, actually. Um, I've been a, um, I guess it's the participant and observer and GSI performed and functioned events. Um, I think that for what we have as the city of Liberty Lake and what we can do as business development, this is money well spent. So, thanks.
Agreed. Any other, any other comments or questions about the agreement? Mayor Pro Tem and then Councilmember Foyer.
No, Councilmember Foyer had his hand up first, that's fine.
Okay.
Uh, thank you. Well, my only question is, um, as far, uh, in their, uh, agreement, it talks about the reporting frequency. It says the reporting and presentation shall be annually, annually towards the end of the calendar year. Uh, is that something that somebody can speak to that we have received? Or, uh, how do, how do, how, how does that move from one, one party to the other?
So we haven't had, uh, this is the first time that we'd actually have a, we call it an official agreement with, uh, spoke, uh, with GSI, they do submit an annual report to the city, uh, gets filed with the city clerk. So I can have her make copies of the last one, um, that came out. But I probably was on the assumption that everybody was getting a copy of that as well, so.
One follow-up question, if I can, how, how many years continuous have we been doing, supporting this?
We have been supporting it back to 2000, I'd have to go back and look at the exact date. I know we've been doing it since I've been here in 2011.
Thank you.
Same here, yeah. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem and then Councilmember Kurt.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mayor. I also have been a supporter of GSI in the past. Over the years, I've attended practically every one of the functions I can get to, same as Spokane Valley Chamber. On it, I guess what I really question is the structure, how they determine what is a fair value for us to give. I'm really confused, I shouldn't say confused, I'm not confused at all. I'm concerned about how they have the structure determining how much, uh, we would owe anybody else owes. They start off saying that the base consists of the GSI bylaws jurisdictions, which we, we listed jurisdiction, investing starts at, at the partner level of $10,250 to $24,999. And then they go from there that if we want to put in more, I guess get more status, we can raise it to the leader's level, which is anywhere between $25,000 to $49,999. If we really want to move up on the list of recognition, we can go to the visionary level, which is $50,000 and over. So I guess what I question is, is it a matter of the more money that somebody puts in, you'll get more maybe attention for your city? Uh, I'm a little concerned about that and how that's implied. When I look at what we get for a minimum of $10,250, that's where it starts. It talks about what we're able to do. We become an, an ex-official position, the GSI Board of Trustees. We're able to participate in the update meeting, the associate development organization. We get to participate in the executive connect, invite, invitation to attend the Olympic in DC fly-ins, invitation to exclusive executive events, recognition of GSI media and onsite GSI executive update. So I guess what we get is recognition for our money, more so than possibly results. And I know there's a ripple effect and there's an intrinsic value to being involved with GSI. But I want to go back to the actual dollar amount. If it starts out at $10,250, I'd like to have some explanation how it's determined that Liberty Lake has a base investment of $19,250. And then, of course, it goes to 50 cents per population, which is another 5,700. And then special projects advantage at 1,300. We also have to realize with this agreement, we're also agreeing that any other research and stuff they want to do, we're automatically going to be involved to pay for those. So the large question for me is, how is the base investment done?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Uh, Councilmember Kurt, you were next.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, oh, sorry. Um, I just had some kind of questions similar to, um, kind of the vein that, the theme that I'm hearing here is just whether, um, whether the level of investment that we've, that we're currently at is meeting our needs. If, um, if we're not using some of the resources that we're getting from the investment, I'm just wondering if perhaps we need to look at a different level, maybe. just wondering if perhaps we need to look at a different level, maybe a level still staying involved with them. Um, but would one of the other levels, um, better meet our needs if, if we're, um, maybe paying for more than, than what we actually use? So I guess my question is, is that something that we can, um, I guess learn a little bit more about as, as far as what if we went down a level? Um, what would the, you know, what would we lose? Um, would it better meet our needs? I guess that would be my, my question. I'm supportive of staying with the, the GSI. I just, I just wonder if we're, it's, if we're at the right level for what we use it for.
And I'll, I'll hit Lisa and RJ up on that with a couple of my own comments when we're done with, with Councilmembers Seavers as well.
I think the dialogue tonight really helped the, um, in fact, certainly with Councilmember Woodruff, um, but are we getting the analytics and the reports that, th- this is, this is a question towards staff. Are we getting the analytics and reports that, uh, it says we should get is one. Um, but two, I, I think I'm hearing, are we paying for the appropriate level? Meaning if we were to up, uh, our level to the $25,000 level or the $50,000 level, would that be better, would that better serve our community? Would that be an efficient and effective use of our dollars? I, I don't know that I know that answer right now. So maybe that's a question for GSI to come bring back to us. I don't want to halt our decision. I think we should, by opinion, we should move forward tonight, but, but maybe that's the question to bring GSI back, um, and ask them to answer those questions for us that should we, I mean, should we up it by, let's call it 6,000 bucks and get, get to the $25,000 level? And would that provide a significant bang for our buck increase on, uh, on what we're getting out of them? But also are we, are we getting the proper analytics? Are we getting proactive, uh, service from them, uh, coming to us? And I don't, I just don't know that. So I'd, I'd be curious from staff if they feel like we're, they're getting that. Um, and two, should we increase that level? I think the increased level would be up to GSI to come share with us why we would want to do that. Um, why we want to increase $6,000 to get to the next level or, uh, or $31,000 to the following level? Would that be, uh, would that significantly or for the same amount of money, would it increase, uh, what, what we're trying to do with GSI? So I'll just throw that out there. But I don't, I don't think we should halt what we're doing tonight. I think we should, uh, move forward with, um, with our membership based on the level we're seeing right now.
Okay, um, Councilmember Kurt, please hold on just a second. I think Katie wants to talk something in real quick.
Just real quick, um, if you, RJ, is this contract time sensitive that for GSI?
No, um, no, I told last. Let me, let me expand. I just, I gotta, I was, I was trying to look up something as I was doing this. Um, it's not time sensitive. This is the first year that we're actually, we're formalizing the agreement. We don't typically make our first membership paying, payment for another month or so. Um, so that we can work out these questions that we have and have GSI.
My suggestion is you guys have some really good questions. Um, I would love to bring GSI here. Um, actually, they can virtually attend, right? Um, there is a lot of regional benefit. I think Councilmember Seavers started out with that early on in the conversation. Regional benefits for the airport downtown Spokane. I mean, there's a lot of jobs. There's a lot of things going on in the region. And then there might be technical analytical things related specifically to Liberty Lake, but I would love for GSI to answer those questions. And so I, you know, I can call to see if they're available for, excuse me, March 16th to be at our next meeting and, um, we could, we could move that item to the 16th if that's what the council wants.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Kurt?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, so I, I like the idea of bringing this back and, and not moving forward tonight because when we're talking about changing levels, I was actually asking whether we could potentially go down a level.
Right.
And pay less because, and I think what I'm looking at online is different probably than what they work out potentially for municipalities. But, um, if we aren't using some of the analytics, analytics because we don't have the people, I don't know that we need to have a Cadillac if we're really more in the mode of like a Camry. Does that make sense? Like, um, I still want a car, but I, I don't know if we need to have that. And so I would love to hear more about it because maybe we do need the, the, the level that we're at. Um, but I would love to hear, um, you know, just kind of the, the benefits of the, the different levels. Because again, what I'm looking at online with their investment levels, there is not, from what I'm reading, um, a, a ton of difference be- between the levels. And if we're not using some of those things anyway, maybe we could, you know, do something different.
Thank you. Uh, we've got Mayor Protem and then Councilmember Seavers.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yes, the questions I would like to say have GSI answer is that how do they establish we were $19,250? And also my feeling is this, when we start off with GSI and we were asked to donate on there, the idea was it would be proportionate to the size of your city and we would get the same service as the city of Spokane or Spokane Valley. We would still have the same services that are there. I really question this tier of if we pay more, we're supposed to get maybe more attention? Well, how does that work? That's, that's ludicrous to think that if we pay more money, they're going to give us more attention. Come on, if we're going to be in a group with everybody else and we're all equal, the only difference is the size of our population, whatever dollar amount we put in proportionate to our citizens, I think we should get the equal amount of attention that Spokane Valley with 110,000 people and us with 11,000. So I think these are legitimate questions that GSI needs to answer for us.
Councilmember Seavers?
I don't know, uh, off the cuff that I agree that dollar amounts should, uh, determine the level of attention because I, I do tend to think that more dollars will warrant more attention. But, but I agree, I think in concept that, uh, with, but, with, but, with what both, um, Councilmember Kennedy and, uh, Councilmember Kurt are saying is, um, should we go up a level or go down a level? I think it's up to GSI to come explain to us why we would pay what we're, what they're proposing we pay. So, you know, I'll put it that way that I, I think it's up to them to warrant what the cost is. So I do want to move forward and, and support them. But if there's no big rush, I'd, I'd hope that maybe they can come, uh, to our next council meeting or something like that and, and discuss this with us before we vote on it.
All right. Thank you. Um, so there's no other comments. Just a quick summary. And Ca- uh, Mayor Protem, thank you for bringing up the point today because those, those were pretty much exactly the, the questions I had as well with regards to the calculation. Um, and the thing I like about having something in writing where, well, where I was hoping to see more measurable metrics, um, it does at least now get the, the agreement in writing where we do have the presentation, you know, twice a year. I remember, I think it was when Todd Milky was here at one point, and it was a great presentation. He was able to quantify how many leads he sent toward the relay, how many jobs it resulted in. And it was, it was a great report. And this will tie them to performing that twice a year. Um, that, that, I think that's one of the main reasons behind putting this, ma- making this, this relationship more formal, um, with regards to a contract. So we actually do, you know, get, get what we're paying for, um, and we can hold their feet to the fire on certain things. And we will be expecting something similar from Greater Spokane Valley Chamber as well. Uh, but it sounds like we've got some questions to get answered. Um, when we get to the consent agenda, we can, um, we can, we can motion, you know, we can motion to, to move that. Um, but Katie, so we've got questions on the calculations and probably, you know, to invite them, um, to the next meeting to kind of walk through the levels, what the benefits are. I know some of it's lined out here, um, but it gets a little wordy in, in spots. So if, if they can do a good summary for us and the council to kind of outline that.
So I'll be back to Alicia Benson. Did she's able to attend our next meeting or at least send a representative? And I will say that, um, this has not been a typical year in the past year. They did receive a large grant from Spokane County and they have been a major point of contact with COVID PPE grant assistance, a whole host of, um, activities that was way outside their normal wheelhouse. Um, they participate every week in our COVID meeting there, as you know. So I go, the only thing I want to say is what they did in 2020 is probably not indicative of what they're going to do in 2021. But I will break down to Alicia. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, everybody, for, for your input. We really appreciate it. Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Mayor Protem?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I move that, uh, we approve, approve the February 16th, 2021 city council meeting minutes.
A second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Woodruff. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye or raise your hand?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, six out of six. None opposed. Motion passes, six zero.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve, uh, approve, be approved the March 2nd, 2021 vouchers in the amount of $262,025.99.
All right, second move and seconded by Councilmember Seavers. Any discussion or questions about the vouchers? Okay, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Again, six out of six, none opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number C, move to approve agreement for Economic Development Services with Greater Spokane Incorporated.
Did you want to change that motion?
Okay, all right.
Mayor, was this to continue this to another date?
Yeah, I just wanted, I just want to make sure, um, we're clear on the, on the motion. So you're moving to approve it? Okay. All right. So move by Council, uh, Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilmember Seavers. So any discussion? All right. Hearing none. All in favor approving the economic development ser- services contract with GSI, um, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So it looks like, okay, right, let's get a hand count to make sure. Um, so all in favor, raise your hand.
Quick question, Mayor?
Okay, yeah.
I thought we had discussed earlier that we would move this to the next meeting. Uh, I guess I'm, I'm just confused.
Yeah, so that was the discussion, but the, the motion is to whether or not to approve it.
Right.
Councilmember Kurt?
Can I make a motion to amend, um, what we're doing here and?
Mayor, you need to vote on the motion that's on the table. So if someone wants to deny it, they can deny it.
Yeah. That doesn't mean we can't, it can't come back.
Right.
Yep. So that was where I was headed. Thanks, Sean. Um, so let's, let's try this again. All in favor of approving the agreement, raise your hand?
Aye.
Two. Any opposed? Raise your hand. Four. Okay, motion fails. Two to four. Okay. Yeah, there's only six here. Oh, it's not here. Okay. Um, next items are public hearings. We don't have any, no resolutions. On number 13 ordinances was moved, um, to a later date. No emergency ordinances. And so we are on to introduction of upcoming agenda items and we'll also talk about any, our open action items. So Katie, it's all yours.
So I'm going to be flipping through some pages. But look, I will plan to reach out to Alicia Benson after we come to our council meeting and, um, T F the agreement for their reconsideration. Um, the question I have for the council is, uh, if Alicia comes on the 16th, will you be ready to vote on the 16th? Or would you rather that we move that to the April meeting in April? Kind of an open question.
I would be ready to vote. I'll be ready to vote.
I'd be ready to vote.
Okay. So I will bring, ask if she's available and also put her on the agenda, uh, to approve the agreement. And with that, I'm going to flip over to my notes, agenda items. Um, Alicia. So I don't have the document in front of me, um, but I'm going to ask the directors. Um, Jen, did you have any purchases for next council meeting on March 16th?
Uh, March, March 16th is the, um, Harvest Parkway roundabout repairs.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm going to jump over to Lisa. Lisa, do you have any action items on the March 16th?
We may have the, um, agreement, uh, for the water to the public works yard. Um, we may also have, um, an agreement with, um, a Vista for, um, their, for being, or their facilities being outside of the franchise area. It's part of a Kramer, the Kramer Road project.
Okay. So with that, um, those are the potential items on the 16th. And then I also want to mention at this time, we do not have a 6:00 PM workshop, nor do we have an executive meeting scheduled. However, related to the sewer proposal by the city of Spokane, I will continue to keep you informed by email. If there's anything of substance that Sean and I would want to share with you or give you an update, we would, um, add, we would ask to put that on the agenda, um, so that we can have a more interactive discussion about, uh, what's going on. Councilmember Foyer?
Yes. Um, did I hear you just say we're, we are not having a workshop on the 16th?
Well, I'm looking at my calendar and I don't see anything on, on March 16th.
I thought we were going to discuss term limits.
Yeah. Oh, excuse me. I'm looking at an old copy. March 16th at 6:00 PM, we have a workshop on term limits. This was really a cast, Councilmember Foyer, to see if you were listening to me. I'm sorry. I, I wish I packed it in my book and, um, it's out of date. So we do have a 6:00 PM on term limit. Thank you.
Councilmember Seaver?
Just, uh, I guess a point of order. Because, um, the, uh, GSI, uh, vote was just turned down. When it comes back up in our next session or whenever it is that GSI can come back, can only council members who, uh, opposed it bring it back up for vote at that time? Or will it be a?
That's usually how it works, Sean. If, if the contract is any different, does that apply? Sean? Sean? Councilmember Kennedy, while we're waiting for Sean.
Yeah, yes. Just for an answer to that, my understanding is that, uh, the individuals who voted, in this case voted against it, carried the vote, any of them can ask for it to be brought back up. So therefore I voted against it. I would request, I would request at this point, we put it on our, uh, this meeting on the 16th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your bet.
And I have to direct say, RJ's already been in conversation with GSI. They'll be looking at the case, understanding your questions and hopefully bringing some responses.
Thanks, RJ.
Thank you.
Any other, um, items that we need to follow up on from earlier? I do have, uh, we'll be sending the GSI report, um, from Ann that this went out. And what else do I have? Um, and so, and email any Capitol facilities, plan questions to Katie. She will, she will filter those.
And Councilmember Seavers, Dave and I will work on a tour. Uh, Councilmember Woodruff, do you have a day of the week that works better for you than another day?
Um, thank you, Katie. Wednesdays and Thursdays are tough for me because I have before and after school care with, uh, the grandkids, uh, pretty much any other day, Monday, Tuesday, Fridays. The, those are usually good.
Okay, thank you. We'll fill in on some of those days. And, um, yeah, Councilmember Seavers, are you available during the day or does it depend?
Yes. Yes, it's just, uh, like I put my email a couple of weeks out is best for me.
Okay, a couple of weeks out. So, um, technically I'll be looking at the week of March 22nd then. And I'm, I'll, I'll email, uh, Councilmember Seavers, Lightford, uh, Mayor Protem, Kennedy and Woodruff some options to, to, thank you.
And I also have the annual follow-up with Valley, uh, with regards to their meetings. Are there any other action items that we took tonight?
Nope.
Okay, great. So, um, Okay, great. So, um, that's on our list. Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, I have a question for Katie. Katie, in, in that tour, what, what time of the day do you anticipate?
I'm flexible. So, uh, Trevor, it takes up a good part, Jay. But if you guys want to do it in the afternoon, um, or in the morning, it's totally up to you guys.
Okay, thanks.
Last time, just so you know, we started, I believe, at 10 o'clock. We got down close to 2 o'clock.
Thank you.
Right.
I, I'm, I'm open. I just need a few weeks heads up. So, thanks, Katie.
Can we go again?
All right.
Um, Miss Ken?
You can bring the stuff.
Space availability.
All right, so if there's nothing else in the council, we are back to some comments. Again, if anybody would like to make a comment, um, send a note to Todd via chat and another, so three minutes. And reminder, this is citizen comment period. It is not designed for the council to have interaction with the citizens. We are here to accept the comment. Um, so just a logistics reminder on that. So Todd, you have anybody?
Anybody? Anne, I have something.
Anne, you have anything? Um, was there anything that we need to note for the record?
I have nothing, Madam Mayor.
Okay, all right. So with, so with that, we do have an executive session. Sean, do you have the RCW, um, to note for executive session? There won't be any decisions made and we'll come back out in a jern, probably what, 15 minutes at max?
Uh, Katie, I, I'm sorry, I hit the wrong button before earlier. Um, but the RCW is 4231101, G as in George, uh, for a personnel matter. Um, Katie, you might know exactly how long we need.
I'd say, Tim, I'll just say 15 to be on the same side.
Okay, so with that, we all adjourned. Oh, any other questions? I heard something.
Uh, Tim?
Oh, Tim Olson? Is you, is that citizen comment?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to go ahead and recognize the sewer tax issue that came up tonight. And I wanted to appreciate the city council for looking into this and fighting a little bit for us because it seems to be pretty sudden. I also wanted to recognize that the, um, Pro Tem, Pro Tem Kennedy and GSI issue as far as what we're paying, you know, getting recognition for, we're getting for our money as far as the GSI goes. Uh, while I'm a huge supporter of GSI, I want to make sure that we're getting our voice heard. And I don't think it should be a pay for play type of environment. And I also want to recognize that in the first situation where we had, um, public comments that we had some very directed comments of not only city council, which was not allowed, but we also had some commentary that, um, pretty sensitive commentary. And that, that individual has not, has decided not to be here at all for the rest of the council meeting. I just want to recognize that. It seems to be more of a, uh, agenda versus a serious concern about the citizens. They have not decided to be here any further. I'll leave more time than I have.
Okay, thank you, Tim. We appreciate it. Okay, so with that, we'll adjourn to executive session for 15 minutes. Again, no, no decisions we made. When we come out, we will adjourn. Have a good night, everybody.
Uh, five minutes or?
Yeah, we'll, we'll just get on as fast as quickly as we can. Thanks, everybody.
Start at 8:20?
Sure.